Good morning, everyone. We have a couple other folks coming. We're waiting on the dogs. I don't know how else to say it, but there are a couple here, so we're going to go ahead and move forward because that is our first agenda item. I'm calling to order this meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. It's our staff meeting, April 29th, 2025. Let's do introductions from the dais.
Kristi Rochell, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Semerol-Dumas, Commissioner.
That was Stephanie Semerol-Dumas, she's the Commissioner. She evidently got a cold today, or allergies.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Anne Schoolly, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
Thank you, and I'm Commissioner Denise Streighouse. All right, we've got a couple fun things at the top of our agenda. The first is a proclamation recognizing National Therapy Animal Day, and Commissioner Dumas, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you so much. I'm really excited about this, and we got notified about this several months ago. Wanted to make sure we had you guys come in. We couldn't do it on the specific day, but this is the closest we could get, so I'll get started. Proclamation and recognition of National Therapy Animal Day, whereas Pet Partners has designated April 30th as National Therapy Animal Day, and whereas scientific research shows that interacting with therapy animals can reduce stress, relieve depression, slow heart rate, lower blood pressure, and strengthen the immune system, and whereas therapy animal teams in Hamilton County pay an essential role in improving human health and well-being through the human-animal bond.
And whereas therapy animal teams interact with a variety of people in our community, including veterans, seniors, patients, students, and those approaching end of life, and whereas these exceptional therapy animals who partner with their human companions bring comfort and healing to those in need, and whereas we encourage more pet owners to consider becoming Pet Partners volunteers to help our community by creating greater access to meaningful animal visits.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that Hamilton County Board of Commissioners encourage our citizens to celebrate our therapy animals and their human handlers. Further, we also salute the service of therapy animal teams in our community and in communities across the nation. Be it further proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners does recognize Wednesday, April 30th, as National Therapy Animal Day in all of Hamilton County. A sign, though.
Please come up and say a word, and then we're going to come around and get a photo.
Awesome, thank you. So I'd like to recognize my friends here. We have Tracy and Jeep, and we have Nancy and Minnie. If you guys want to come around here.
So cute.
There we go. And my name's Trish Smith. This is Rosie, and we are with Pet Partners of Greater Cincinnati, as mentioned. Tomorrow is National Therapy Animal Day, and it is a day to recognize these wonderful animals that we are able to partner with, and we get to visit hospitals, hospices, schools, businesses. Our requests have been up substantially in the last year, especially for schools, businesses, and first responders. So we need teams, and we love to visit, so if anybody has a need or would like for us to come visit, I know I've already talked to a couple folks here in the crowd, please request the visit. We love it, and we love to come down. We'd love to come see you again. So thank you for the honor. It's very wonderful. Thank you so much.
I want to say.
Can you tell us how people would go about requesting a visit?
Yep, on our website, tpgcpets.org, and I can give you a card for that, and there is a place to request a visit. It's a simple online form, and then it goes to our coordinator, who then sends it out to our teams to see who can come. So yeah, we'd love to come see you guys.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thanks for what you do.
Yeah, thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment. I know you guys probably don't want to hear this voice, but I just want to say, I love, love, love dogs. Had them all my life, and I'm just, I use every excuse not to get one, and I'm just hoping that somebody maybe leaves one at my doors.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
And then I have to keep it, so.
Oh, no. She has 14.
Right. I know, I know, yeah. I want to give them all my attention, and if I can't do that, I'm not going to get one, so.
Well, we can help you out with a visit.
Okay.
Very good. All right, we're going to come on around.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, I do. Oh, yeah.
Can I have you guys over here, some beautiful body? Get the dogs on the floor.
Okay.
No, we're just going to share.
I have one, I think.
Oh, very good. All right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, our next proclamation is Recognizing Sexual Assault Awareness Month. We've got a couple folks here from the YWSCA and Women Helping Women. We've got Jennifer Maloney from the YW, Courtney Harshaway from the YW, Amber Mallett from Women Helping Women, and Kelsey Richardson from Women Helping Women. So thank you all for being here. We're going to read through this proclamation and then ask you to come up and say a few words. So again, proclamation recognizing April 2025 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, whereas Hamilton County expresses solidarity with survivors of sexual violence, and whereas one in five women and one in 67 men experience some form of sexual violence in their lifetime through the scope, though the scope is not fully known, due to under-reporting, and whereas 87% of women and 90% of men did not tell anyone or seek any help after experiencing sexual harassment or assault, and 54% of rapes go unreported to police.
And whereas women and children, specifically women of color, individuals with disabilities, and members of LGBTQ community are disproportionately affected by violence, and whereas most sexual violence is committed by someone that the survivor knows, including intimate partners, acquaintances, or family members, a pattern that consequently requires strong educational programs and comprehensive safety protocols, and whereas abuse survivors have endured is never at the fault of the victim, and any person who has suffered at the hand of sexual violence is deserving of equitable access to healing.
And whereas the prevalence of several health conditions such as asthma, frequent headaches, chronic pain, and difficulty sleeping was higher for sexual violence victims compared to non-victims for both men and women, and whereas Hamilton County is taking initiative to support survivors and prevent violence through the work of the Domestic Violence Task Force in conjunction with the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office, the Clerk of Courts, and the Domestic Relations Court, and whereas Hamilton County partners with local agencies to prevent sexual violence by investing in programs such as Women Helping Women's Prevent and Empower and the Divert Program, as well as the YWSCA of Greater Cincinnati's Youth Violence Prevention Program in construction of domestic violence shelters, whereas everyone in Hamilton County deserves to live in a safe and supportive environment where they are treated with respect, dignity, and compassion. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that we, the Board of County Commissioners, does hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in all of Hamilton County. Going to ask one representative from each of the organizations to say a few words, if you don't mind.
Good morning. Thank you. I'll speak on behalf of, I, um, take over. She told me I was going to have to speak. So I'll speak on behalf of the Y and Women Helping Women in expressing thanks to you, the Commissioners, and to the county, as well as the systems involved, the Commission on Women and Girls, for offering support and resources so that we can empower survivors. We know that sexual violence does not discriminate. We want to be present in the community so that folks that may be feeling isolated can have access to services and support for safety and healing, and it takes part. And it takes partnerships such as this in order to create that solidarity so that survivors can be empowered and protected. So thank you so much for recognizing this.
Thank you, and I know Mary Mountney is in the room, the Director of the Commission on Women and Girls. And as, and I'm glad you referenced that, the Commission and this Board of County Commissioners has been supportive both in the preventive work of going into schools and teaching about healthy relationships to boys and girls. But also this divert program is really important to the safety of folks that are in these domestic violence situations in the community. So thank, we couldn't do any of it without the partnership. And so many communities don't have Women Helping Women or the YWCA. And so we are so blessed in this community, have this partnership with you. And we, as a group, are very happy to support your efforts and make sure that the county is recognizing the need for these services. So thank you for being here. Commissioner Reese, any comment? I know, I don't know.
What comment? Coming in at the right time. Thank you for all of your work. And I want to thank our board for the partnership with you, understanding how important this issue is. And then us putting dollars behind it. I think you've come up with some new and innovative ways. When I first got here, the goal was, how could we expand out to the county? And you've expanded out to the county. So we want to thank you for that as well, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Semerodumas.
Thank you both, and thank you for both of your organizations being in the forefront of bringing this forward. People were not only walking in silence, but some of the agencies didn't want to talk about it. And now everybody's talking about it, and I appreciate it. And I'm sure the people that do help appreciate it even more. So thank you.
Thank you. We're going to come around and take a photo with you as well. Okay. We are going to move on to item number three. This is the resolution approving the MOU between the Board of County Commissioners and the Bengals. This is Phase One of the stadium modernization project. So I'm going to ask Jeff to provide some background information related to this item, and then go to the county commissioners. Jeff, let's start us out here.
Thank you, Commissioner. I do not have a PowerPoint for the board today, as was presented last week. But did just want to provide a brief summary of this issue and the MOU being recommended to you today. I just, and to address some questions that have come up over the past couple of days. First, in summary, at its heart, this MOU is designed to memorialize the fact that the county and the team are, one, currently in lease negotiations, and, two, needing to take certain steps now to prepare for the expected Phase One renovation of Paycor Stadium in 2026. So how does it do that? First, it specifies that the scope of Phase One, it specifies the scope of the Phase One renovation. I walked through that last week in my PowerPoint. Like I said, I don't plan to go through that again. But just in summary, the team will be, under the terms of the MOU, will be investing $120 million into projects such as renovating the East-West Club Lounges, all 132 suites, making renovations to various concession areas and concourse renovations throughout the stadium. 60 million of that 120 million will come from an NFL loan that the team will repay over, I believe, the period that I believe is 15 years. Paycor, to my knowledge, has never received NFL money. And the board has been clear in its direction to have an NFL contribution as part of its capital stack for Paycor, so this MOU allows for that. The county's responsibility, under the terms of the MOU, will be the delivery of various projects necessary for the team to construct its projects, thus unlocking that NFL money. This includes primarily some safety and infrastructure projects such as escalator replacements in the East-West Club Lounges. These have failed several times recently, as a matter of fact. Electric power upgrades, code upgrades, suite seats, and glazing infrastructure. And the county would also be responsible for Phase One, or in Phase One, for the renovation and the replacement of the technical control room that controls all the AV, audiovisual elements within the stadium. We call that, it's known as Jungle Vision. So in total, the team is putting in approximately 120 million into the G5 projects, facilitated by 34.5 million in projects from the county. And the county also, in Phase One, would complete renovation of the Jungle Vision system, which I believe is at its end of life, close to 25 years old. So now, here's the important thing. Most of this work will not occur until 2026. What the MOU does is say that the team and the county will continue planning, design, engineering these projects, and conducting some initial procurement activities. And in the county's case, that entails around 3 million or so of escalator part procurement while we continue to negotiate a lease. The lead times on this pre-construction work is such that if we wait, these projects won't happen in 2026. And if they don't happen in 2026, it could significantly jeopardize the amount of NFL money that we are able to pull down. So this is equally important. The MOU prescribes that the county and the team will keep pushing for a long-term deal by June 30th, which was the trigger date for the team's extension in the current lease. If we are unable to get there by June 30th, we have the option of either extending that date, if we're making progress, or we can reduce or terminate the project commitments that I detailed earlier. So at the end of the day, in summary, the MOU keeps progress moving on our lease discussions. It keeps us on schedule for renovations in 2026. It defines the major components of the Phase One project and sends a message to the state that we are in fact prepared to receive state funding as a part of this capital stack for the renovation of the stadium, and it helps secure NFL funding. Just in terms of answering a few questions that have come up over the past couple of days, and some of these were asked last Tuesday. Some of these have bubbled up through emails I've seen, et cetera, and I just want to be very clear about some of these things. The first one, I'm not quite sure where it came from. But in terms of emails, I think someone had, was watching and maybe heard something that was in error. But this MOU contains no new taxes. The, there are no local, new local taxes in the county's financial model at all. The board has been very clear about that since the beginning. So I just want to be clear about that. There was also a question, a very good question about other stadium escalators as well, the other vertical transportation elements in the stadium. In our 2025 capital improvement budget, we did put 7.5 million dollars in that budget to refurbish all of the escalators in Paycor Stadium. Those same escalators, the other escalators, aside from the six that we're doing as a part of this project, those other escalators will be part of the Phase Two renovations of Paycor as we move forward. But we felt it was very important to put money in now to refurbish all of them, recognizing that some of these, in the broader master plan, may move position. And we didn't want to, uh, wanted to make sure that we didn't put too much money into them right now when we're not exactly sure where they're going to be in the stadium as we refine that master plan. I was also asked a question about the Jungle Vision project, because I think it's natural, when you hear that word, that it has connotations of a large scoreboard or something like that. Maybe similar to what people would think of when they hear the word Jumbotron. Jungle Vision is in fact more than a screen or a scoreboard. It is the, really the brains and the network that controls all of the audiovisual experience when you are in the stadium, and even relating to what is broadcast outside of the stadium. So very important, as that system reaches the end of its life, that it is replaced and is a significant infrastructure matter, not just a screen. I was asked the question of whether the MOU capped the funding of any one party, and the answer to that is no, it does not. The MOU speaks specifically to Phase One of the renovations. It does not expressly cap the contributions of any party. Those conversations will continue as we work through the lease. And on the subject of the lease, we have met with the team on the business terms related to the lease. I would expect, following this action, that there will continue to be many meetings on that as we move forward towards the June 30th date. But I did just want to make it clear that these, the actions the board has taken today and the terms of the lease are very much related to one another. So Commissioner, with that, I will turn it back over to you for Commissioner comments. Happy to answer any questions as we go through this, though.
Thank you, thank you, Jeff. Thank you for reminding us of kind of the nuts and bolts of what this MOU is about and answering the questions that were brought to your attention. Commissioner Semerodumas.
Thank you so much, Jeff, for your summary. I just want to make some general statements. When I received the MOU, I said, okay, we're talking. How can I make this work? I basically lived my life with the glass half full. It's something called assumption of goodwill. So unless someone showed you something differently, then you accept them for who they are until they turn on you or do something different. Now, we did have a whole different group, we know, in the past lease, who signed the lease. None of us are up here. So I had an assumption of goodwill and the fact that they were talking. I also knew that for the NFL monies, the deadline was April 30th. I looked at this MOU with a fine-tooth comb, and for a few days. I did not want to be the one that was said, the April 30th deadline went and gone because of me. So I just wanted to make sure that I was doing the right thing. I wanted to also ask Jeff and his team to give me clarity on the financing stack, the plan. Because when you say 120 million, to me, just being a layperson, I thought that the Bengals were given 120 million, as was said earlier. They gave 60, and they had to match the NFL with 60. That's a little different, but they still have to repay that amount in 15 years. So they still are responsible for that. But upfront was 60 million. I also wanted to ensure a way that we could get out of the MOU if we had to. As I said, it's assumption of goodwill. But if people are not saying and talking and communicating the way they should, then we may have to get out of it. I also wanted to ensure that clarity was added, that in the current lease, and when I say I wanted to make sure, I talked to the team, that the current lease would not change. But the MOU would speak to future leases. So I don't know if you remember when I spoke before at the end, it said, the lease would not change, but we're working on a new lease. So I wanted to be specific and say the current lease would not change. And at some point, you have to trust the people that are going in the room. I mean, we've hired them, we've talked to them, we've shared with them, we've not dictated to them, but we gave them our opinion, as a board, where we wanted to go. And at some point, you have to trust the people that are in the room and that they are in there on your behalf, unless you find out differently. The team had to provide projects for the NFL that showed some economic impact. I understand that. But I questioned the fact that I didn't see enough about community and residents. I understand now the first phase has to focus more so on the economic impact. But if you look at the second phase when we put it out, it will specifically deal more with the community and the residents. Just one second. I also asked about the Jungle Vision. And I thought it was like a Jumbotron. But they sent me pictures of all this technical rooms and what it included and everything. But I also realized, when I talked to the team that we have hired, that it was not necessary to put that extra 30 million in, that we could do this deal with just the 34.5 million and take the 30 million out. Because the Jungle Vision is already incorporated in our responsibility of taking care of this Jungle Vision, because it's 25 years old. So we had already decided we were going to fix this thing up. There was no way that we needed, in my opinion, to put it in this time. And I wanted, to be honest, I wanted us to give less. So I worked on the weekend trying to figure out, how can we, because, you know, that lease, we, you know, we were paying 94% still, the residents were paying. And I was saying, I want to see good faith out of the Bengals. And I truly believe that they showed some good faith in this instance. And if you look at the change, the Reds, it's a three-to-one ratio from the team versus, and then a two-to-one ratio for the cash that was put up. So that is just an awesome deal. This is just the beginning. There are other phases, as we look at the term sheet, where they have to be, the team has to be specific on their commitment to move forward. And if they are not, we can't move forward. So I think that's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Reese.
Thank you very much. First of all, let me say that I want to be clear. Today, I'm not speaking as a fan. A lot of people know I'm a huge sports fan. I'm not, look, I'm not here as a fan. We have a lot of fans, some live in Hamilton County, but a lot of them don't live in Hamilton County. And we appreciate their support as fans. However, I was elected to be at this particular juncture as a representative of the taxpayers that voted for me. 218,338. Yeah, that's important, because that was rough. And in talking with them, they had a lot of things that they had said to me during the election and after about how they wanted to be represented. So it's not Alicia Reese's thing, it's what the people voted for me asked me to bring to the table. There are a couple things that I am concerned about today, and I've named a lot of them before, but I'm going to just highlight them today. One, it is true that there is a different group from the county side that is going into this negotiation. But it's the same ownership that was in the negotiation in 1996, 1997. The voters went to the polls to vote for two stadiums, and they supported that. I wasn't even in politics and wasn't thinking about being in politics. What they were concerned about, though, is after they voted, there was a lot of meetings behind the scenes that created what you call the binding document, aka the lease. They were so angry that they waited to the chance they could catch the next election cycle, and that person was elected out of office. And Todd Purton, the late Todd Purton, was elected against this lease on behalf of the people who voted for two stadiums but did not vote for these details. What I have found in this is that the ownership, their side, did a very good job, and they put every single thing in writing. There's no such thing as a handshake, or let's just talk about it. Whenever there's something, it has to be in writing. And I have been concerned, because what I voted on was for our... And I have been concerned because what I voted on was for our team. We said, we voted for some people to go in. I maybe was, I, I told the voters that I thought that's what I was voting on, is for our team to go in to negotiate a new lease. That's what I was voting on. And the goal was to go in and get out of this lease that does not exist in any NFL team in America. It's a 94% on the taxpayers backs and 6% on the ownership. So in essence, I was voting to bring the team in, to bring the cost down. I said, go in there and let's get a better lease to bring the cost down on the taxpayers. And so I thought all these meetings that were happening was to get to this lease to bring the cost down. But instead, what I've been presented today is an M, a whole lot of meetings that resulted in a memo, AKA MOU, that's putting some more money up. Not one cut to the taxpayers. We're not adding $65 million to the existing deal. And if you go to item number 7.1 on here, it asks the question and it explicitly says, let me get to it, cause I want to make sure I'm accurate. It says 7.3 says no impact to the lease. We didn't bring a cost down. I sent them in there to bring the cost down on the taxpayers, to get out of the 94% on the taxpayers back. What I got a result is, we got to hurry up and vote for 65 more million dollars and nothing on this. And then we say, well, we can't do nothing on this, we got to wait on the state. But we're moving on this. Now, I appreciate deadlines. They say, oh, we got to do this by April 30th. However, we've had a deadline since 1997. This lease has a deadline on it. And since 1997, we knew that they had until June of 2005, which is now, to decide if they're going to stay. And to June 2026, if they're going to go. So we had a, we had a deadline since 1997. So I appreciate the NFL's deadline, but we had, we could have been working on this 20, 30 years. We, we knew this deadline. So we could have maybe had this mirror the deadline of the NFL on April 30th. And we had a head start. But nothing today on the lease. Now, when we go back and look at, if we, I'm a sports person, you go back and you look at, okay, two negotiators coming to the table, of course, we got to give and take. We want a win-win. I learned that from Procter and Gamble when I was inter, get a win-win, but never walk away with a win-loss. And sometimes it gets dicey. It's going to get rough, because if I got, they, if someone has 94%, you trying to get some percentages off of that, it's, they not going to want to just give up the 94%. No one wants to give up this deal. It's like a person has a deal with their cell phone 20 years ago, unlimited everything and they don't offer it no more. They're always trying to get you out of it, but you say, no, 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 I'm holding on to this old deal. Or a insurance deal that they don't sell anymore, a policy. You want to hold on to this old policy, cause they don't offer this anymore. But I'm disappointed that I voted to go into, go into the room and bring something back that cuts the cost to the taxpayers. That was what I was charged to do. That's what the taxpayers told me to do. And today, we're not cutting the cost to the taxpayers, but instead, we're adding $65 million in the court, or whatever, we're adding money to it, 60 million or whatever, 34 million, whatever. It's an add, it's not a subtraction. It's not a subtraction. And then we don't have a lease as a result. Now, I have voted, when they say, hey, show the team you want to work with them. Mr. Ludo presented that we needed to do this $39 million deal to do some upgrades. We got to, the same, you know, same thing we're hearing today. We got to do these upgrades and we, we got to do it before the season. And I did go along with it, showing goodwill to Bengals ownership that, yes, I'll go along with it. And Mr. Ludo said, we do this, we can, we can get a lease. We did it, no lease. We did something with the grass down there, some kind of irrigation or whatever. We said, if you do that, it'll show goodwill and we can get a lease. I went along with it. Every week almost, we got something that we're doing over at Paycor Stadium, we're voting for things to keep our end of the bargain. I vote for them, never voted no, because we want to try to show goodwill to get a lease. We came back with, the naming rights came up. To this day, they've never told us how much they got in the naming rights. $66 million, we found out later, because Paycor and Paycheck, they had to sell. So it was public record. For $66 million, guess how much Bengals ownership gave Paycor? 16 years. We're putting up millions and today, we're getting no extra years. Zero extra years. But for 66 million, they got 16 years. And oh, by the way, made sure it was under the threshold in the lease, so the taxpayers got zero, didn't benefit from it. Then we came back and said, hey, we want to have the community more involved in these stadiums. We own these stadiums, the people don't get a chance to be in there. So I came up with, hey, what about a watch party? For free? So that the fans and the citizens could come in for free. They ran and said the NFL, Mr. Ludo ran and he gave me a letter, claimed the NFL said, no. But then they came back and now they have watch parties, but now it's costing you $99. No benefit to the taxpayers. And when I look at this, and you keep a scorecard, they've been undefeated at beating the taxpayers since 1997. They beat them with the lease. Taxpayers lost. $39 million in upgrades, no lease. Taxpayers lost. Get the grass fixed. Taxpayers lost. No lease. $66 million in naming rights, no money for taxpayers. Taxpayers lost. Paycor, Paycheck got 16 years. Let's have a free watch party for the community. They said, no. Taxpayers lost. Can't even go in the place. Can't even get in unless you got money. Then we came back and I thought originally, they said the NFL, in our discussions, we needed to have at least 100 million or more from the NFL, from the NFL to help with the capital stack. The real cost of what is in this MOU and what has been told to us is 830 million. So we still got a deficit. If it's 830 million that's necessary to move forward. So with all of that, I just see the taxpayers keep getting the short end of the stick. We keep à la carton our way, but never getting anything more for the taxpayers. Even in this MOU, again, 7.3, underlined, no impact to the lease. So if we were trying to get a better lease, this has, this ain't going to get it. Says nothing in this MOU, I'm reading what it says, is intended to, nor shall be deemed or construed to, or alter the terms of this lease. And this is what the taxpayers said they want to get out of. This is what they want to talk about. I didn't run into anybody said they was looking for a MOU or memo. They want to get a better lease. So nothing today, according to 7.3, I didn't write it, has anything to do with the lease. So the job was, oh, we got, we ain't got nothing. Back to the same lease. Now, the next thing, and I was excited, cause I thought, man, we going to get some, maybe this, but, but it's all said, if we do this, we can get a lease. If we do 39 million, we can get a lease, keep spinning. If we can do, if we can do this, we going to get a lease. We haven't gotten it. Now, Exhibit C, it says, what the county funded? What would the county fund for these dollars? Okay? It says, East and West Club Vertical Transportation. It don't say nothing about going up to the 300 section, the cheap seats, the so-called cheap seats. And I had a lot of people call me, say, hey, I'm up in the cheap seats, you didn't give us no new seats. I'm up in the cheap seats, I can't get up on the escalator. Now, we said we going to roll it in, but that thing should have been done immediately, immediately. But it's not in here. This is saying club lounge and suite level. You know how much that costs? This is for the big time folks. Electrical power upgrade to East and West Club Lounge Suite Levels. You got to pay extra to be at the suite levels. That's extra money. And we don't control the cost of those tickets. The other thing, we don't control any tickets, but they can go up on these tickets. Then it says, East West Passenger Elevator. Okay? Then it says, suite code related updates. So everything is suite, suite, suite. The suite seats. Then it says, suite glazing refurbishment. Now, this is what the county dollars, this ain't they dollars. This is what our dollars are going into. So for me, I heard it very clearly, you know, I'm ready to look at when anybody gets ready. So let's get down to the lease. Now, I'm not privy to all these meetings. They have some meetings and I don't know, and sometimes we get it, but sometimes I, I find out stuff on records request myself. We can't have that. Records request and then I get it, to read it. I don't even know what had went on. So it's very complicated, but I think it's very simple for me. I'm ready to get down to this. And I'm kind of disappointed, I ain't going to say kind of, I am disappointed, that I voted to send the people in to negotiate and what came back is a memo for some more money that doesn't impact this particular lease. I did present a counter and said, why don't the Bengals ownership, because of the deadline, go ahead and front load it all? Because I know, based on Forbes Magazine, they could afford it. Could they front load it? And then we keep working on the lease and if we get something with the lease, maybe we can roll that in. And that, I don't even think was even presented to them. But I think that would have been a, a better deal. So I, I can't support this today, but I will have to say that I have supported the Bengals. I support them almost every other week. We vote on something that has to get fixed over there. I supported the 39 million in hopes we would get a lease, we did not. I voted for this grass, whatever they call it, that was some funding, I voted for it. No, they said, if we do this to show that the lease happened, it did not happen. I tried to work with them and say, let's do a watch party, let's do something free for the community and the citizens. It was said, no. Then they came back with the watch party and now want to charge the citizens to come into this publicly owned facility. I, I don't agree with that. I did say, I was told that the NFL needed to put up a minimum of 100 million toward the capital stack. We don't have 100 million from the NFL. That's not happening. I have tried and tried. I said, let's get busy on this, cause since 1997, according to page 21 and 23 of the contract, it gives the dates of when it expired, when it will be expiring, and we just haven't moved to that. And 830 million is what I'm told is the total cost. And there's no, nothing in this lease to bring the cost down on the taxpayers. And that's really my goal. So with that, I won't be able to support this today. I think I showed a lot of goodwill in my votes to support, and now I think the taxpayers need some goodwill to get to a new lease that gets them out of a 94% deal. Maintenance and operations, I've been very concerned about that, because the maintenance cost is going to be high. This is an older facility. It's like an old car with no warranty. We've got to get this maintenance off the backs of the taxpayers. It gives them a lot of risk and exposure. And as you can see, these deals exceed even us. We weren't even here and we're still dealing with this deal. And whatever the next deal comes, that might be 20 years. That's a long time to tangle up the taxpayers. So we've got to make sure we get a, a better deal. I'm going to stay hopeful, but we just can't keep giving away all the chips when you're trying to go into a negotiation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So let, let me offer some comments as well. So we all know that our county asset, that the taxpayers built, is about 25 years old, sits down on the riverfront and is in need of capital maintenance and improvements. And so we have done quite a bit of work with the team to come up with a plan. It's 830 million, as we all know. We whittled that down from over a billion. And the idea here is that we don't have to build a new stadium because we've taken care of the old one. And that's the good news for the taxpayers, for the team. The team concurs. And we're in a position that not every community is in, and I think we should be proud of that position. So we have been talking about then, how do we get to financing this 830 million that's in front of us? We've been talking about the need for a financial stack for stadium repairs for years. And this commission and commissions before us have said, we need a financial stack, we need to do it differently than was done in the past. As has been referenced by both commissioners, the taxpayers are on the hook for 94% of those upgrades right now, and none of us think that's fair. So we've been talking about this financial stack, we've been talking about the county through the sales tax, we've been talking about the team, we've been talking about the NFL, we've been talking about the state, all participating in this financial stack. The reason we need that kind of participation is because these repairs and upgrades are expensive. 830 million is something we cannot do on our own. We're not raising taxes, we've got only so much capacity in that sales tax that people voted for, and so we need financial partners to make sure that we can do this work. And the work gets us to a place where we've got better access to the facility on all fronts. We've got safety measures going in, it's been mentioned, the vertical transportation slash escalators, elevators, all need to be replaced, they're, they're not in great condition. We want to have more events in the facility, we need to accommodate for that, do the maintenance that needs to be done, and then do these upgrades to accommodate all of that. And so this MOU that we have in front of us today represents phase one of these capital improvements and capital repairs. It is not the comprehensive list of things that we need to do in the end, but it is the first phase of what we can do. And as we have seen, we've got an unprecedented level of financial participation outside of the county money. So we've got the NFL coming in for the first time ever to help with improvements in our, our county asset, and we've got the team participating above any rate we've ever seen. And so that's the good news for the taxpayers. The county is also participating in the financial stack, and we are doing, as has been discussed, some kind of behind the scenes kind of work for technology, for some of these vertical transportation issues, knowing that, you know, with the NFL money, we have certain obligations for fan-facing kinds of improvements. That is not true of the repairs and maintenance that we'll, we'll be talking about moving forward, that we part of the larger stack, right? So, so this has some strings attached and we have responded to that, making sure that we are doing what we need to do for the fans, for the community, but also acknowledging that some of this is driven by this NFL money. But we're, we're grateful for the NFL money. So the county will be joining the NFL and the Bengals by advancing dollars for the projects as part of the larger renovation. So this is a new look for us. We've not had this kind of participation before. This has all been on the taxpayers in the past. 94% has been on the taxpayers. So this is a new look and I think it's a good look. It's, it's a good look in response to what we hear from this community constantly, which is, we need a better deal. We need a better lease, we need a better relationship with the team and the NFL and the state to get more financial participation from all of the abut, above. So it's, it's a different look for us and I'm proud that we have gotten to this point. And again, you know, this phase one piece, where we've got this multiple groups participating in the stack, is a precursor to the rest of the lease. We're in negotiations, we've been negotiating, we, we've been negotiating for years, trying to get financial participation for all of these improvements from the state. Other commissioners have been president during those times and have advocated. I am now the president, now I am advocating, this is just how it works. But, but we've all done this work, trying to make sure that we all have a common understanding of where we're trying to head. We've also been in plenty of meetings where we've talked to our national team. So we've, again, this is a new look also, we've got some experts at the national level who deal, do these deals all over the country, advising us on what does a fair market deal look like? The Bengals have their people and we've got our people. So we've got internal people, but we also have national experts advising us on this. And so those negotiations continue. And so those negotiations continue. The role of the board has been providing policy direction to those individuals so that we're very clear on what we're trying to achieve as a board. And we have been very clear and we've had multiple meetings. The guy's name is David Abrams and so those negotiations continue on. So we're sending a message to the, uh, state. We're sending a message to the team and the NFL that we are looking to work collaboratively, uh, to get this work done. So the other piece of this, and I'm just gonna mention it briefly, is the state piece. And people have asked me, you know, where are we on that? Um, so the, the governor had, uh, the gaming fee in his budget. It was removed on the House side. Something was put in for the folks up in Cleveland on the House side. Now we're in the Senate side. Um, so this is just how the process works. And so we have been meeting, uh, with the senators. We all three met with our local delegation to make sure they understood where we are on these projects and, and make sure they're well-informed so they can also advocate on behalf of Hamilton County. But we've also been meeting with leadership over on the Senate side, both the president in the Senate, the chair of the finance committee and others who are, um, on these committees, making these decisions to make sure they understand what it is we're asking for and, and what we hope the state will do by way of partnership. So those meetings are ongoing. Um, so we had some goals here. We continue to have goals. The goals in the MOU are the same goals for the lease. The goals are a diverse financial stack, which we've got in this MOU. Repair and renovate the asset, belongs to the county. It's in the MOU. No new taxes. That's in the MOU. And so the MOU checks all these boxes. And we hope that this is the precursor then to the lease moving forward. So related to the timing, cause I've been asked about this timing issue as well. Um, the timing is for the, the NFL money so that we can take advantage of that. It would be, to my view, a bad idea to not do this on time and forego sixty million dollars from the NFL. I don't think that's, I don't think that's a good look for us. Uh, but it's not only about that. It's also about getting the projects moving. Uh, because as the administrator said, uh, these projects need to continue. We always have to be do- doing improvements to the stadium and these projects need to get going. And so that also, um, goes into the timing here. So this is not our final action. We've still got a lease to negotiate with the Bengals. Uh, we are in the process of doing that. But this is, um, it's an agreement between the county and the team. And it, to my view, is a much better way moving forward than where we have been in the past, related to the old lease. And so I am, uh, bullish related to the lease negotiations. But if things don't go as we want them to, we've got an out clause in this MOU. And I think it's important to know that because we don't know. We've, we've got some time here. Uh, we've got experts negotiating on our behalf. We're all, you know, setting policy direction. But things might not go as we want them to. We've given ourselves an out clause in this MOU. And so we've protected the taxpayers if things don't go as we want them to. So I am, uh, prepared to vote in favor of the MOU. Commissioner, I don't, does anyone have any further?
I had a cou- I had a couple of comments. As was said earlier, this is all a process. Um, and so I had no expectation when our people went in that they would come out with a lease. So I don't want people to think they didn't do their job. Um, none at all. And as was said earlier, we're given direction. And the majority of what's in the MOU, I'm sure we're gonna move forward into a final lease. The next step would probably be the term sheet, which we've looked at and, um, come to some agreement on that. It's all a process. And it's what's, there are a lot of good things in here, as was mentioned earlier about the NFL. And also that the county financial stack is only a third of all the money um, that we said would go into this process. And was mentioned earlier, and I wanna confirm, we are waiting for the state um, to contribute what they are going to contribute. And lastly, um, make it, I wanna make it very clear. I keep hearing about the ninety-four percent in the lease. And it was atrocious. It was the worst thing ever that I heard of for our residents. But I'm gonna make it very clear. We are not going to agree with anything in that scope. And if I'm up here and I agree to something like that, I need a name of a psychiatrist. Because this is the worst deal lease agreement I've ever seen. It won't happen. We keep using that as PR, ninety-four percent, ninety-four percent. It's the truth. But there's no way, and we said no new taxes. That's what's great about it too. So we need to look at the good, look at the bad, look at the indifferent and work together to make this a good lease that we can all appreciate and be proud of. I wanna be proud of it, cause all we do is talk about the other commissioners uh, who made such a, a terrible lease, in my opinion. I wanna be one of the commissioners and say, well, they were up there and they really made a difference in this lease agreement. That's all I have.
Thank you. Yes.
Commissioner Reese, thank, thank you. Um, I can't support it, cause at some point we've got to say, let's stop and really get to the lease. I've been saying this for over two years. When are we gonna get down, roll up our sleeves, get the blank piece of pe- piece of paper out and get to the lease? And each time I have voted thirty-nine million. We had the same, I mean, we could take the tape. It's the same tape. If we do this, because we gotta make these improvements, we're gonna show we're together, we're gonna show we're a partner, we should go with it. And I said, okay, then I, I'll go with it. It's gonna take us to be able to get to the lease. And each time we keep giving up, giving up, giving up and we're not getting for the lease. The lease is last, when the lease in my mind should have been first. Now I'm gonna be clear. I really voted for the people to go, to go negotiate a new lease. Period. That's what I told them. We already was talking to them about, uh, making, uh, improvements. We had that on our agenda almost every month. We've got some things that we've gotta fix and we do. We do that every month. Millions and millions and millions. I'm gonna add it up and I'll get you a total. That's different. But then they said, if we do this thirty-nine million dollars, we got to hurry up and do it. We got a deadline and I went with it. I went with it. And we got no lease. Hurry up, we gotta do something on the grass. We gotta make sure everything's right. I did it. And I didn't get a lease. The people didn't get a lease. So I, I don't wanna say this is a past lease. This is the lease today, the lease tomorrow, the lease next week. This is the lease until you get something else. So this is not the past. This is the right now. And so for me, I thought, and let me just say, last time they, and that's not to say the people we hired are not good, but they hired somebody too back in the day. We can't find the person. I asked them what's their name. Oh, I don't know if they still in business, I can't. But they hired somebody too that was supposed to do these type of deals and understood, uh, NFL and all that. And at the end of the day, I don't know if they, their recommendations were taken or not taken. But this is what happened. And we can't find those people to this day. The taxpayers still have to pay. The other thing I forgot to bring up, which is very important. Taxpayers were promised thirty percent property tax rollback. That's why a lot of homeowners ran to the polls and voted for it. Because they said, even if I don't, uh, like football and I'm gonna pay for it, even if I never go to a game, but I'm gonna pay for it, maybe this'll help me with my home. Hold on to my house. And so in the resolution, it says property tax rollback, but it doesn't say the amount. Okay? It goes and says that on the first whereas. Now, every year we gotta fight for the thirty percent. And I'm always told that the fund that we have, that fund, which is sales tax, we don't have enough. Now, we were able to get it done, I think twice since I've been here, but we always say we don't have it. So how do we not have it here and it's the same fund, but we got it for the memo for more money? I got a problem with that. The other thing, when I talked about them being undefeated and beating out the taxpayers, is the thirty-nine million dollars with no lease, I talked about that. The sixty-six million dollar naming rights, no money for taxpayers, wouldn't even tell us to this day how much it is. We had to find out in the newspaper. They get sixteen years paycor paycheck for sixty-six million. We putting up something and we get no new, no more new years for this. Then I talked about the watch party being free. We said we want something for the community. They came back, said no, came back with a watch party they're charging for, so they can make money from that. The other thing is, they went to the state. This ain't the first time going to the state. Uh, the Brown ownership went to the state to get a deal for their stadium and everything. Our folks went to the state and got a deal to be exempt and probably these upgrades they're gonna be doing, they're exempt from sales tax. Now, how do we pay for the stadium? It's with sales tax. We went up on sales tax. So somebody buying bubble gum is paying. Mike can't even afford to go to a game. They have to pay. But they want to be exempt. So they're undefeated against us. And I'm just trying to get a win for the taxpayers. Can we get one? One for the taxpayers? And that's why I'm on the lease. So today, even though I went with thirty-nine million dollars, I went with the grass. I went with millions and millions of dollars every single week. Today, I've got to say no on behalf of the taxpayers. And I look forward to when they're ready to talk about the lease. I'm ready to get down to the lease. So unfortunately, I won't be able to support it today.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna emphasize, uh, one thing that I, I spoke about, but I didn't put a finer point on it. So the eight hundred and thirty is the total for the maintenance and upgrades. This is a hundred and twenty million from the NFL and the team. And if we don't agree to the MOU, that one twenty goes away. Who's paying for that? Right? This is part of the financial stack. And so I am in favor of this because it helps us not only do these improvements and upgrades, but it also helps us reduce the burden on the taxpayers. And so, uh, I think this is, again, a, a new look for us. It's unprecedented. The Nat- NFL's never done this before and the team is contributing in a way they've never done before. And so we're on a good trajectory, um, as we move forward with this MOU. More to come related to the lease. We've got a little ways to go here. Um, but I do think this puts us on good footing. So with that, I'm going to offer a motion to approve of the resolution approving of the memorandum of understanding between the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County and the Cincinnati Bengals regarding phase one of the stadium modernization and renovation program and associated agreements pertaining to Page Corps Stadium.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Samara Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
No.
Thank you. All right, let's move into our next item. This is an exciting item for us. This is the Economic Impact Program Grant Recommendations. Kelly Adamson is here, there she is. Um, she's a senior economic development officer for the county. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner President, and good morning, commissioners. Um, I also want to let April do a quick introduction as she'll be doing a part of this presentation with me.
Hi, my name's April Galilei. I am a senior program manager with Hamilton County Community Development. Happy to be here.
And, um, first, I do wanna take a very quick moment to thank Gaines Brown, the program and the community development, um, for putting together today's visuals and presentation. We just really appreciate his talent and time, so wanted to thank him. Um, and myself and April, um, in community development, we're, we're very excited to present to you all the twenty-twenty-five, um, funding recommendations for the Economic Impact Program. Um, this is a new funding collaboration. Um, and to give you a brief overview of how this came about, um, in twenty-twenty-four, Hamilton County's, um, Planning and Development, um, Community Development Division and Department of Economic Development uh, worked in partnership with Alloy. And thanks to Alloy, Catherine Fitzgerald and Dan Ferguson are here as well, um, to, together establish the Economic Impact Program. And so this program is the result of a combination of community development, uh, block front funds. Um, and this is from, those funds are from the U.S. Department of, uh, Housing and Urban Development. And then this is also intertwines the Economic Development Community Revitalization Grand Funds. Um, so those two funds are working together in a new partnership, um, which allows Hamilton County to both streamline the application process, um, but also support a broader scope of county projects and programs. Um, and so both funding sources support strategic large-scale and prioritized projects that result in a positive economic impact for these communities. And the twenty-twenty-five budget for this program, um, does total three-point-four million. And this is a combination of two-point-five million in general funds and then nine-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars in CDBG funds. And those are those community development block grant funds. And so when we combine our funds together and set out this application, we had seventeen different communities and they all submitted twenty applications. Um, this did total seven-point-four million dollars in project requests. And to, you know, reviewing these requests, we had an economic advisory committee, um, an economic impact advisor committee that we convened and, uh, they reviewed each application very thoroughly. And they made recommendations based on project readiness, project need, um, project support, place-based investments and economic development. Um, and I do, to recognize their time and resources that they've given to us over the past couple of months, um, I wanted to share a brief thank you to the following committee members. Um, we have Greg Kohler, Kathleen Kennedy, Jeff Mills, Lawrence Jones, Mo Aldon and Mike Donahue. And, uh, thank you to Greg and Lawrence who are here with us today. So before we dive into presentations, um, I did wanna share a map with you um, to visualize the broad impact of these recommended funds. Um, this shows how these combined dollars and for the first time these coming together can create a true county-wide impact. And then to go into a brief overview of the funding recommendations, you can see the thirteen communities, their project type, um, and then their total project cost and then their project requests and of course our recommendation as well. And then it was a competitive round, therefore not every applicant was able to receive funding. Um, eligible projects were scored against all the factors I mentioned earlier. And then these, um, scoring them against these factors just ensures that grant funds are supporting projects which are ready to go and then they're ready to drive, of course, significant impact um, and economic growth across communities across the county as well. So now I'm gonna pass it off to April and she will share, um, specifics on each of these recommended projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Springfield Township. Due to its location in a flood plain during heavy rains, businesses along Chile Creek and Congress Road experienced flooding resulting in significant damage and property loss. Springfield Township requests funds to mitigate flooding in this industrial area. The city of Blue Ash. In twenty-nineteen, Proctor and Gamble vacated the Sharon Woods facility in the city of Blue Ash, resulting in the loss of thousands of jobs and three-point-five million in employment taxes annually. Blue Ash is requesting grant, a grant for infrastructure improvements to attract new businesses to the former PNG site.
Can I point something out here? So you're gonna run through these in order. So the ones that you're at the top here have been the ones recommended for funding, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We're going in order of, of the cost of the project.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Except for one section.
Okay.
Okay. The city of Forest Park. The city of Forest Park has partnered with a private developer to purchase and redevelop sixteen acres along Wynton Road at a ninety-five acre site that once was the Cincinnati Mills Mall. The partner, Hillwood, is investing over one-hundred million to redevelop the site to include industrial and retail space. The village of North Bend. The village of North Bend requests grant funds to create an ADA crosswalk, a bike trailhead and a pedestrian passway leading into the historic William Henry Harrison Riverfront Park. The village of Lachlan. The village of Lachlan plans to acquire the former bank building at one-nineteen Mill Street. The building lies in the heart of one of Lachlan's historic districts. The community intends to stabilize, rehabilitate and repurpose the building. The village of Lachlan also requests funds to implement the West Wyoming Business District Improvement Strategy, a streetscaping project which is on, one of the recommendations of the village's twenty-twenty-four mini planning grant. The city of Mount Healthy. The city of Mount Healthy applied for grant funds to build on the success of an existing facade improvement program in their historic central business corridor. facade improvement program in their historic central business corridor. The business district is currently being considered for the State of Ohio Historic Registry due to its significance in the history, architecture, and culture of the region. Columbia Township. Columbia Township requests grant funds to build a municipal parking lot on vacant land in the heart of a Plainville business district. Parking there is currently limited, impacting both consumer traffic and the ability of the township to attract new businesses. The City of Loveland. The City of Loveland acquired the Denisey Mirror Factory, which sits in the middle of the Madeira Business Road corridor. Due to its size and deteriorating condition, the building is a deterrent to attracting new businesses. The city plans to demolish the building. Village of Woodlawn. This project is part of the village's economic development strategy to redevelop Springfield-type pipe between Riddle and Grove Road. The village wishes to acquire and demolish a property at 10185 Springfield Pike. Village of Elmwood Place. The Village of Elmwood Place requests grant funds to complete an existing project to renovate multiple parcels along its fine street business corridor and turn it into a public parking lot. The City of Harrison. The city applied for grant funds to support additional facade projects which are both needed and are in high demand in the city's historic business district. Like Mount Hely, the project will help preserve historic buildings in the district. And last but not least, Colerank Township. Although this is a small amount of money, this is a mighty project that people have been waiting for for some time. Colerank Township seeks to fund, funds to hire an engineering firm to identify storm water management solutions as part of its highly anticipated redevelopment of the former Northgate Mall. And the next steps moving forward will be notifying the communities of their awards and also thanking the communities who participated and did not receive an award. Awarded contracts will be presented to the Board of County Commissioners for approval, and EIP Information Seminar will be held in June this year. We decided that we would start early, moving towards helping more of our communities turn in projects that will get funded and also help them work on their applications. We also, at that time, plan to do workshops where we'll be telling the communities about other available resources, funding at that time. And we also have determined that we would like to have the communities be able to sign up for one-on-one sessions with, for technical support with Alloy and some of our other partners. Any questions?
Thank you. You know, this is great. I mean, these partnerships are great. They're, you know, the money's meant to catalyze projects in all these different communities. So it's just really exciting to know that these dollars are going out to help these communities. It's just really, really great. Thank you for providing also the information related to the projects that did not get funding. Some of it, correct me if I'm wrong, but some of it is related to the fact that we didn't have enough funding to go around, for one, but also there are some of these that it appears that didn't have exactly what would have been needed for them to be successful. And so I know we've asked you this before, but as you go back to these communities, we do want them to be successful, right? So you're giving them that kind of helpful feedback, I assume, to make them more successful in the future?
Absolutely, yeah, and that's part of the workshop process that we're doing with Alloy.
Yeah. Okay. And yeah, Alloy is such a great partner in not only doing that, but helping build capacity for these communities that sometimes don't achieve what we need for them to achieve to get these, these dollars. So thank you very much for the presentation. Thanks for your work. Commissioner Somer Dumas.
Thank you for the presentation. And very clear, as was said earlier, about ones that were not funded, and you guys, you always go to Give TA and all of that. Just had a question about the recommendations and the amount that was given out. Could you maybe add another column on the side that indicates the percentage of dispersment? In other words, Springfield Township, they got 50% of what was requested, and like Lachlan got 100%. So it'd be helpful just to see what percentage of the requests they received? Okay? And did you want to?
We're happy to do that, to add that in and send that back to you.
Okay. I'm giving you more work to do. And now, the thing is, I was just wondering, and I always bring this up, the amount, the large amounts that we've given out, was it possible to maybe reduce the level of funding in order to be able to fund more entities? And maybe you were thinking, if we give, they're asking for 600,000, we give them, I don't know, 250,000, that's not even gonna impact the project. So I imagine that's what you were thinking, because the project is 1.2. If we reduce it down to, I'm answering my own question, but I was just wondering how we could maybe, if the reason that they were not funded was not a major deal that they might have, just think about it at another time. This is hard work that you guys have done, and I appreciate it. I'm not trying to change the process or anything like that. I just, you know, when you speak to the other groups that didn't get it, they'll understand that they'll get it. And then we used to keep track of, like Springfield Township, maybe they continue to get funding. Look at the occurrence of how often each entity gets funding. That would be another thing to look at. Okay? Thank you.
Appreciate that. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. One of the things that I think for me would be helpful was more of a, maybe a longer project, is looking at all of the, all of the municipalities in Hamilton County, and being able to have it on an interactive map where we could show where, I know there's different dollars, but where we've invested, so that we could kind of see, you know, what the impact, and maybe there's some that we haven't invested that we might want to either take another look at or get some help, because I know some of them may not be able to fill out the applications, is what I was hearing. I'm not sure if that's the case. For example, Gulf Manor is on here again, or recommended at zero again. So it's like two times they haven't been. So I don't know if that needs to, we need to have some, maybe they need some help with, before these go out, there might be something that we have to help municipalities that are smaller that might need additional help with filling out the paperwork. Maybe their project's not bad, but maybe it's a paperwork type of situation. But so, those are two things that I would love to have coming out. We have an interactive map. We're looking at all, whether it's our dollars or dollars that flow through us, or, so we kind of see where all the funding is going. My question, though, is that we, I know we've had some, not, first of all, let me stop and say, this is fantastic, because one of the things is we must invest in lots of municipalities. We can't just be downtown Cincinnati. We have lots of municipalities, and I like these because it shows how our board is investing around. But there are some that come back because we have one-year contracts or what have you that can't, that ask for us to extend because some funding didn't come in that they thought was gonna come in. What are we doing with that? Because I know there's a lot going on with federal money and, you know, private money driving, drying up as well. Have we factored that into these contracts so that they, maybe if they can't get it done this year, that there's something, or do you anticipate that being a problem, I guess, is the question?
Yes. And one of the things, one of the reasons we gave out so much money to some projects is because of increasing cost. Cost has gone up exponentially for a lot of projects. That's why Mount Hely is back here again, and although they've done everything they can to complete their projects, costs keep rising. In addition to that, you know, the declaration of a historic district is a great thing in many ways, but also that increases the cost for construction. The price of everything automatically is higher because harder to get. It has to meet certain specifications to qualify on the registry, you know, but it is a great thing for the communities. We are taking a look at cost, rising cost, and helping communities find ways. As we said with our, moving forward with our workshops, we're going to be connecting communities to other, not just technical support resources, but resources that can also help them find other funding, other ways to support their projects.
Thank you.
If you don't mind if I add, also, we're looking at executing, increasing that timeframe to do to your agreements, because some of these projects do take longer, especially with limited resources, and then working specifically with Alloy on these communities to ensure that these projects are being executed. The Community Impact Program is a great part of this too, that I know they'll be presenting on soon, and giving attention to those communities that have received dollars and making sure that those can actually be executed and that county funds are being, you know, put to, put to good use, and making sure that those projects are being executed in a timely manner. But it, so I appreciate you pointing that out, and especially the workshop, this is the first time we are doing this and hope it to be a continuous piece, because we need to come to communities and meet them where they're at, as you were saying, and ensure that they're receiving support, not just applying for our dollars, but those complex applications for other dollars as well, which is tough for them to navigate. So that's a, yeah, and I appreciate that. And I wanted to say that with the interactive map piece, we actually have something in the works to be able to hopefully show you in the coming months. So we're looking forward to that piece, so right on track with, with the way that you're thinking, and so we're excited to be able to share that with you soon.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Yeah. And I neglected to mention that this combination of CDBG dollars and the large, or, I'm sorry, the Community Revitalization Grants that we implemented, I guess it was maybe three or four years ago, I think is a great idea because you're leveraging and allowing the communities to participate in an easier way. It's more streamlined, as you said, because there's now one way to gain access to these dollars instead of having to do two applications at two different times to get these dollars. I mean, it just, you've really, we're doing everything we can to try to help these communities succeed, so I really do appreciate it. Can you give us like one example of what, when there's a deficit in an application, and I didn't read through all of them, but give us an example of what, we used to see lack of capacity, and that's why some communities were, Gulf Manor, for instance, or Mount Hely or others, were always left behind. What is an example of what you're seeing now for a project that doesn't meet the criteria, not because there wasn't enough money, but rather because their application was lacking?
I'm sorry, I was gonna say, I think a lot of these projects, they might be submitted, and they could be great projects, but they're not, the city might not have ownership yet. They're not ready to have it move forward in the next coming, you know, year or two. So oftentimes, we'll come back to them and say, here's some feedback, let's help fine-tune it, and then come back when you're, when you're ready. Some of these projects are just not ready to go yet. That's one initial one that I thought of. I don't know if you have anything else to add, April, on any specifics?
Some projects submitted were not economic development. You know, a park project is a park project. It's not necessarily economic development unless it's like Henry, the Harrison Park that we funded this year, because that's gonna create revenue down the line. Harvest Home Park and Cheviot that we funded a few years back is gonna create revenue down the line. So some of the projects didn't fit the criteria for economic development, and additionally, for CDBG funds, we have certain requirements in some projects. For instance, there was a project that wanted to do a municipal building. We don't, we cannot pay using the federal dollars for any municipal buildings that's gonna house the city government that is requesting the funds. There's various reasons.
That raises a question. So because some of these are general fund dollars, and some of them are CDBG dollars, the general fund dollars have to be tied to the same strings that the CDBG are? I mean, are they looser?
They're, they're looser.
Okay.
Unless, for instance, in one of the projects, we combined the dollars, in those cases, the CDBG funds, the qualifications, the criteria overrides those funds, and they have to meet all of those standards moving forward with the project.
Gotcha. Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so, yeah.
No, Commissioner, and you hit on this a little bit earlier, but just not getting into the specifics of any of the grants or the applications, but you noted the benefit of this for the communities and the applicants, and that is absolutely the case, and it's a great thing for how we're conducting the program. I just wanted to congratulate everyone who's been involved with this internally, because not only is it a great thing for the, for the communities, but I also think it's really just indicative of a staff that, you know, you go to other, other organizations and people, you've got a lot of silos that exist, and I'm not saying that we're completely free of silos here in Hamilton County, but at the same time, what we're seeing here is an example where people have said, it's not about our turf, it's not about our program, it's not about me having control over certain things, it's about doing what's right for the community and for the taxpayers of the county. And that has resulted in the combination of two extremely powerful grants that we have in this community and have really amplified their effect out there. So I just want to congratulate everyone for their work on this, so thank you, guys.
Thank you. Can you tell us what our next steps are, if any?
Yeah, absolutely. So we will reach out to these communities with, with funding recommendations being passed. We will notify the communities, and as April was saying before, we will also be sure to invite everyone to that Economic Impact Workshop that's happening in June, and then agreements will come before the board individually as they're signed, so you'll see them soon.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Really appreciate, thanks to the team back there. Yeah, thank you so much for your work on this.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a couple of executive sessions, so I'm gonna move that we go into executive session pursuant to ORC 121.22-G2 to discuss the acquisition of property and our, sorry, sorry? Yep. And our second one is same, executive session pursuant to ORC Section 121.22-G2 to discuss the acquisition of property.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse. Commissioner Somer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes, thank you.